Okay. We call the Wolfboro Select Board meeting for Wednesday, August 6, 2025 to order. Mr. Town Manager, do we have need for non-public?
Mr. Chairman, we do. We have three items under employment, four items under real estate, and two items under legal advice.
Consideration of minutes, July 16.
I have a number of changes. The first one is on page three, and it starts on line 139. It's the motion, and I would like to make a comment about the motion. I am concerned about motions being made without proper documentation as a reaction to a Capital Projects report. I voted against the motion because I had no way of locating pooling area. I checked the December 2024 CI CEI Design for Forest Road Drainage Improvement. The email, the report was sent to us after the meeting. On that CEI drainage report was poorly done and not supported by Wolfboro Waters. I checked to see if there was any reference to pooling area. The answer is no. I do know that the covert to be replaced is on the east side of Forest Road in the town easement. This motion makes no sense, and I hope in the future the Select Board will wait until there is documentation before making this kind of a motion. I, you know, I just don't know what we really accomplished by it. On page five, line 193, page five, 193, it's Jonathan Bourque, B-O-U-R-Q-U-E. On page seven, line 335, it should read at the end of that line, 52 should be changed to 50. On page eight, and I've got to say, I think this is great with the numbers on the side, line 368, I'm talking, it should read about taking the parking spaces, no parking, and it should say after the crosswalks. And on page 15, 705, 8705, it should say, it should CIP, or maybe we should write Capital Improvement Plan in, in parentheses, CIP. And then at the end of the minutes, I'm puzzled why there's attached the minutes of 716, 2025. It was talking about docks and wharves. We tabled any conversation about anything with the docks and wharf? I looked through the minutes, I couldn't see that there was another...
We did.
What?
We did table it.
Yes, and so I don't know why those minutes...
We tabled it.
Yes, and so why are those minutes there? I would like to remove them from being attached to the set of minutes.
Any other changes? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion as amended?
I'll make a motion to accept as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So I want, Mr. Chairman, could I just speak to something?
Sure.
Now that we have approved this, which I appreciate doing, it's been brought to my attention that outside of this forum, the data that I've shared has been concerning vacant parking spaces has been impeached, whatever the right word is. Just a reminder to people, the assumptions I use are lines, and I do agree with you, Linda, thanks for Brenda putting the lines, line 378 to 387 is what I said I would do to collect data. I'll continue to do that. So if anybody has any questions, my only comment would be come up with better information. So I just want to remind people, we've approved these minutes, and that's the way I'm collecting the information on vacancies. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public input. Anybody want to speak to us? Public input at this point? Okay, thank you. Public hearings. We have a few of them tonight. First on, the Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 6:30 to amend the temporary event permit for the Cape Park Band to add an additional date for a concert on August 31, 2025, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Community Bandstand in Cape Park, permit number 2025-01. Is there anybody here from the band group? Okay, they already have one for the season. Somebody want to make, I'll close the public hearing? Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to amend a temporary event permit for the Cape Park Band to add an additional date for a concert on August 31, 2025, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Community Bandstand and Cape Park, permit number 2025-01.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, 6:30 p.m. to approve a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Junior Bass Masters to host a fishing tournament in Back Bay using the Back Bay Public Launch, August 23, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., permit number 2025-47. Somebody here from that organization?
Yes, John Fox, he is representing.
Anybody have any questions on the board? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Junior Bass Masters to hold a fishing tournament in Back Bay using the Back Bay Public Launch on August 23, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., permit 2025-47.
Second. Okay. Any debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Linda, do you want to amend that to say 2025? You said 24.
Yes, I will, 25.
A question for the town manager, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask the town manager?
Go ahead.
So in my notes, I see a note here that says we have a lot of fishing tournaments. That's good. And that they, they don't really meet the criteria of a temporary event permit, but we have no other way to approve them right now. I'm not sure I understand the notations.
So the notation here is specific to parking and the trailers, 10 to 15 of them, to be able to be parked in Back Bay. That is going to be very tight in that area. One of the interesting things that's occurred, you're going to see a lot of these fishing tournaments coming in front of you over the next several meetings because there was never a mechanism for them to recognize the fact that we needed to have them fill out an event permit. We contacted New Hampshire Fishing Game, who they register the fishing events through. New Hampshire Fishing Game contacted all of the applicants who have fishing tournaments scheduled in Wolfboro, and as a result, we're getting a number of these. So you're going to see them coming in front of you. I think the item that is more problematic for some of the smaller tournaments is they may not have the insurance that this town requires.
So if I could follow up, is the, is the issue for us, we're just having a difficulty with helping them find a place to park the trailers? Or is it some other issue that's going on here?
Well, I think that there, this indicates 10 to 15 boats. That's a significant number of boats to be parking in the Glendon Street parking lot. So that's why I had put a note to you regarding Filterbed Road, whether or not we want to assign them to go there. It is a midsummer event, and parking is a premium for those trailers at that location, which tends to fill up.
So since this is on the application, is that what we're asking them to do?
It's the board's discretion as to what you would like to do. If you would like to instruct them to go to Filterbed Road, that's fine. If you'd like to instruct them to use Back Bay, that's fine, but we're going to have to block off most likely the trailer parking for them for the 10 to 15 boats.
So the reason this came to be was a citizen contacted me and said, look at all these trailers parked in Back Bay area, they're parked on the side of the roads, they're parked here, and it was problematic. So I contacted the, the only tournament that we had given a special event permit and found out from them that it wasn't their tournament that we had approved, that it was another tournament. I contacted that gentleman because he gave me the name. They've been very, very cooperative, and they said, there's lots of tournaments. So then I looked up and found the list of all the Bass Master tournaments, and there may be other organizations other than Bass Master, and found out that we have anywhere from 15 to 25 tournaments a year in Wolfboro, and we never recognized them. So then I found out from them that Moltenborough, as one example, and this is why you have a paper from Moltenborough in front of you for a fishing tournament launch request, Moltenborough notified Fishing Game a decade ago and the Marine Patrol to let them be notified, the people getting the tournaments, that they needed to go to Moltenborough and fill out the fishing tournament launch request. By the way, Moltenborough charges $150 a day for allowing a tournament in their town. They don't, they do not allow tournaments on weekends or holidays. So they're much more restrictive. We've been very, very lax about this, and we've let it happen, and sometimes there can be up to 25 boats, and that can be problematic. So I was going to talk about this, and I still will, under other business, and I think that it's something that we have to look at, and we can simplify. They still do go before the Select Board members in Moltenborough for these requests, but we might be able to use this in a different manner, like another licensing form.
And the...
Yeah, I think what this points out, and it doesn't really fit under our temporary event permit, we need to come up with another policy to address fishing tournaments and the boats, and we had in our packet, and it came from Primex, a, I do not agree the risk profile is similar to when an individual boat owner uses a dock just with increased number of trailer parking in your lot.
Yep.
So I think in terms, we have some information here, and I would like us to put on another agenda, a discussion item to discuss fishing tournaments policy, and let's come up with something.
Mr. Chairman?
We have a template right here.
Aye.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. So that, thank you, thank you, Brian. So that explains your letter that you sent in, that had, I was just told of, and the group told me, and I was also told by, and my first reaction to your letter frankly was, this is a fact, this is really what's going on, so that was that. But this is not a new event. I mean, we have fishing tournaments taking place for as far back as we can see, right?
Yeah.
Is this all of a, so it's all of a sudden a problem?
So this is, this is, so I've talked to someone who has been part of the Bass Master group and actually fished with Charlie Moore 30 years ago, and he said for decades, these same tournaments have been coming to Wolfboro. It was just never recognized.
Yeah, so I agree with Linda. My first question is, is this a problem? Is this something we should work on? And if it's not a problem or not something we should work on, then we won't. And this idea, and I'm not criticizing you, I think you did great staff work, but this idea of asking somebody who wants to have a handful of people go out for a tournament to come, fill out a form, come before the board, and whatever fee, they, you know, it just seems to me like it's oppressive. But I think we should talk about it.
That's what I'm feeling. I think we should gain the information.
Right.
Have a good discussion about it.
Yep.
Take a look at, find out about trailer parking. Let's get all the information.
Yep.
And sit down and have a good discussion and decide what how we want to move forward as a board.
Yep.
Okay.
So the, so the question on the table right now is, on Saturday, during the day, are you going to have 10 boat trailers parked down there when other guests and other people want to be able to come into town, and these boat trailers can be parked at Filterbed Road?
Well, these people are also guests coming into town.
I get it, but it's, it's a big demand.
Well, again, it's been going on for three decades.
Yep.
There hasn't been a big issue with it before. My only concern was that a form like this, well, they already have to fill out one with the Marine Patrol, they already have to fill out one with Fishing Game. I don't think it's a big lift filling out another form for us, and we've had the others that fill out the special event permit form already. So I don't agree with Paul on it's, it's, it's putting an extra burden on them.
Or getting into the discussion, that's what I was trying to...
Well, getting into a discussion, which I don't think we need to have tonight. We need to keep going, the last schedule here.
So the, so the board doesn't feel like it's a parking issue?
Well, we're going to discuss that, John. We're going to get the information we need, and then we'll have a discussion.
At another meeting.
Right now, no. Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to approve a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Bass Club to host a fishing tournament in Lake Wentworth using Mass Landing Public Launch on August 23, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., permit 2025-48. Anybody here? No? Okay. Board, what would you like to do with this? We've approved the others.
Move to issue. I move to approve the temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Bass Club to host a fishing tournament on Lake Wentworth using the Mass Landing Public Dock, Public Launch on August 23, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., permit 2025-48.
Second.
Do you second?
Yes, hold it. Oh, Brian?
Brian's second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 6:30 to approve a temporary event permit for the Raymond Bass Masters Fishing Tournament on Back Bay and using the public launch on September 27, September 28, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., permit 2025-49. Anybody here? No?
Move to approve a temporary event permit for the Raymond Bass Masters Fishing Tournament on Back Bay and using the public launch on September 27, 28, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., permit number 2025-49.
Second.
Linda.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to approve a temporary event permit for the Stratford County Anglers to host a club-level bass tournament in Lake Wentworth using the Mass Landing Public Launch, October 12, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., permit number 2025-50. Anybody have any comments? Want to make a motion?
So same question. You have 20 anglers and 20 boats. We're going to, same, same issue. Do we have a, do we have a parking request for people in town?
Was there a problem last month, last year?
This is also in October, October 12.
Well, what John may, if I could, what John may be asking is, and he's making a point, I don't know how we deal with it, is it all happening at the same time? Or to your point, was it happening at different times of the year? I mean, if this turns out to be a parking difficulty, please make everybody aware that you can use the Filterbed Road parking facility. Please don't park your, your, you know, your, your boat, your trailer, whatever, on the side of the road, or Wolfboro PD will visit upon you. So just go to Filterbed Road, and it's pretty easy to get out there and pretty easy to get back.
And the reason that I'm bringing it up is because staff is writing it on the form, so I'm taking it from the staff.
Yep.
Yeah, and there's 20 anglers, but there's 10...
Well, that's why I think we need some further action on, on this, but at a later time, later night. Okay.
But I think, but I think it's self-regulating. If the parking spaces are clogged, then, you know, parking on the side of the road is a no, no, you can't do that. They're going to have to go to Filterbed Road. That's it.
So move to approve a temporary event permit for the Stratford County Anglers to host a club-level bass tournament in Lake Wentworth using the Mass Landing Public Launch on October 12, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., permit number 2025-50.
Second.
Okay. Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to approve a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Single Track Alliance to host the Summer Race Series at Abenaki Bike Trails and Ski Area on August 17, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., permit number 2025-51. Anybody here from that group?
Lucky you.
Yes, I'm Jeremiah Beach, I'm the promoter of the event.
Okay, so anybody have any questions, Brian? I think we have pretty much everything in the packet that I saw, anyway.
So what kind of racing is it?
It's a mountain bike race. It's a combination of cross-country and enduro.
Are there any electric bikes?
No.
Good for you.
No, it's all human-powered.
So how will you, how will you officiate the, the parking and that stuff? Will you communicate with Parks and Rec on this one?
Uh, yeah, I believe that in the permitting process, it goes to all concerned departments. I think this is the fifth year that we've run the event there.
Thank you.
Dave, I'm, a more important question is, is the course the exact same and it stays away from the spray field areas, correct?
It does avoid the spray field areas. I actually went over there yesterday to communicate with the trail crew to make sure that we were all in alignment there as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a question for Jim. It said they want to use the bathrooms at the lodge. Does that mean, are we specially opening that lodge for those bathrooms?
I believe we have the ability to open those remotely, so no, we're not specifically sending somebody to open them, but we would most likely run into potential cleaning issues.
So I think another time we should take a look at trying to cover that expense for the cleaning if we, or the, or they as a group could just have a pot, porta potty put there. One of the two.
So did...
Yeah, in the past, we had used porta potties, and then last year, it was, we were advised that the lodge was a better way to go, and if there was a cleaning issue, there would be, that would be discussed afterwards.
Did you talk to Christine Collins about that?
I don't recall exactly who I talked to. I'd have to look back at my email chain. I think that it came through Amy.
Jim, if we can deal with getting them clean, having, talking to them about getting clean, I'm fine about opening the lodge, I just don't want the taxpayers have to cover the cost.
I think, I think this is similar to the pickleball request where they want to use the fossil field, and we had trash pickup, and we had cleaning, and we assessed the fee, but I don't believe that came out in our fee structure when we talked about that.
Well, then we should look at it again.
Yep.
It were amenable to a cleaning fee if that's applicable.
Okay, yeah. I'm fine if they're, we address that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Lenora, did you have a question?
No, I don't have any more question. What?
Hi, Lenora Clark, Conservation Commission, sticking my nose in where it doesn't belong. Point of order, it's no longer the Wolfboro Single Track Alliance, it's now the Greater Wolfboro NEMBA Chapter, so you might want to alter your motion accordingly. That's it.
Good for you.
And to clarify that further, the, the race series is sponsored by NEMBA, the regional organization, and Wolfboro Single Track Association did convert to a NEMBA chapter this year.
So it should be NIMBA.
NIMBA.
It, it is. The way that the, the way that I entered the permit, it does not mention Wolfboro Single Track on there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the temporary event permit for NEMBA to host the Summer Race Series at the Abenaki Bike Trails and Ski Area on 17 August, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., permit 2025-51.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the Wolfboro Select Board will hold a public hearing Wednesday, August 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to approve a temporary event permit. The Kingswood Middle and High School Cross Country Race to host a cross-country race at the Abenaki Bike Trails and Ski Area on September 18, 2025, from 3:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., permit number 2025-52. Anybody here for that? Anybody here for that?
Hi, I'm Tony Belial, head coach for the Kingswood High School Cross Country Team.
And I'm Sarah Christian. I'm the middle school coach.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for them?
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll move to approve a temporary event permit for the Kingswood Middle and High School Cross Country Race to host a race at the Abenaki Bike Trails and Ski Area on September 18, 2025, from 3:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., permit number 2025-52.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yeah, Paul's second.
I second it.
Oh, Paul did.
Sorry.
And I, I had a conversation with the coach and he said that they've already gone over the course and it will also stay away from the spray field areas, which is important.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the bulk vote. It includes the Weekly Manifest, which is, one of the school payments is on there for 3.8 million. Tentacutt, Haynes Hill. We have committee appointment for town boards. We have the library alternate.
That's a, that's not part of the bulk vote.
Oh, that's separate, okay. Right. All right. Bulk vote is the Weekly Manifest and Tentacutt.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bulk vote, A through B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is order committee appointments. Annual appointments for the library alternate trustees, Diane Bodak and Sandra Whittier. Either one of them here tonight? Can you just tell us who you are? Okay. Is Diane here? No? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Diane Bodak and Sandra Whittier as alternates to the Wolfboro Library Trustee term expiring on July 31, 2026.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.
Dave, I think Paul wants to ask something.
Mr. Chairman, since we're moving into new business with the agreement of the board, I would like to recommend that we, we move item E on the agenda, which is the approval of a Josiah Brown Scholarship Award up to the first order of business. The applicant was here last time. We, we had some information that we had to gather and it was long in the night and we, and I, I just out of respect for their, the fact that they already showed up. If we could move it forward, I'd appreciate the consideration of the board.
And I'll second that motion on Paul's.
And I agree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any new business? Otherwise, the move to the Josiah Brown Scholarship Awards? Okay.
So the last round regarding this, you had asked for additional information. You see in front of you in the memo what the balance of funds are available in the account as of May 2025. And then there was a conversation about recommendation of what we should be issuing. Under the bylaws and guidelines, it outlines that not more than $1,500 per student, per semester. However, you as the Board of Selectmen do have the ability to amend that, to change the amount. And if you want, you can tie that into your motion and move this forward.
I'd like to make a motion that we award $6,000 per applicant for the first semester, which would equal $24,000 with 101,000 plus. I think that is a good number.
Second.
Okay.
So I'm just curious, Lynda, if you could give us some reasoning for the number, just so I understand.
That is what we've been doing. And consistently raised it to that. I looked at that would bring out if we did it, you know, the whole year would make it 48. We've changed our regulations. We're trying to get more people in. So when we, if we were done for the year, we'd have 53, realizing another 30 would come in. We'd have, you know, about 80. But I'm really hoping that instead of the four, we'll have seven. And I'm, that's, I think that was our goal as a Board of Selectmen, to try to get more. But I think with what we have, I think things, 6,000.
That's, that's a great explanation and it's good that everybody understands now.
Last time I heard, that's about the price of books.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Lambert. You might remember me as one of the Girl Scouts who proposed the new community center. I just wanted to thank the board for giving our group the support during that process. Because of the project, I found my journey to architecture. I further want to thank the board. As a recipient of the Josiah Brown Scholarship, I am entering my junior year of architecture at Wentworth Institute of Technology in Boston and had the pleasure of interning locally at a remodeling company, helping in their designs and plans process. Thank you.
For you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Nothing, except I remember Miriam from second and third grade and first at the Carpenter School.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a commercial vessel landing permit for the Dive.
Hello, everyone. How are you? I'm Jamie. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So tell me, I guess I'm here for the permit. I'm not really sure. I've done my homework. I've spoken to, to Brian, contacted Mount Washington about their times. They were coming over to do their landing. And we worked out our times with them. They have a couple particular dates that they've made me aware of, which don't have any bearing on us whatsoever. So we've, we've come up with a little list of, of times where Mount Washington have their times, what we would be, prefer to do our times. We are a much smaller venue. We're a 10-minute pickup and a 10-minute drop-off. I don't expect to take up much of space or time for anybody or be in anyone's way. Mount Washington, we have a good relationship. And we were, from here on, if we're talking about August 13th, we would be going into September 12th. And we'd be doing three pickups and drop-offs per week. And that would be consistent with Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday evenings from 1,900 to 2,100. This doesn't have any conflict with any other vessels that I'm aware of. Mount Washington, we're absolutely fine with that. If there's any other vessels that you guys are aware, I know we've talked about Sandy. Big Sandy has nothing to do with it. They're only a daytime vessel.
Correct.
Their drop-offs are at 1415 and pickup at 1615. And that ends on August 26th and we wouldn't be anywhere near that time period, anyway.
You said you, would you repeat your pickup and drop-off times?
Yeah, I don't have it here.
Yes, so 1,900 to 2,100? Uh, sorry, 7, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay, so it's only going to be a two-hour event?
It's only two-hour, yeah.
And then you're going to bring that? And your event is going to take you out of Wolfboro Bay?
Yes, we go out, we go, we got, we go out and we go around and then come back and then we'll drop everybody off. It's actually like a two-hour cruise.
Tour?
Yeah.
You're not going to park out there?
No, no, no.
Beautiful.
No, no, we keep going. Trust me, don't want to bother anybody.
Okay, thank you.
And then.
Excuse me.
Yeah, sorry.
I didn't, I didn't get a copy of your schedules.
I didn't either.
None of us did.
I haven't had, I, we just, we just came up with a schedule. I haven't given it out yet because we had to make up the times yesterday. So I haven't had the time to give anyone anything yet. I just wanted to make sure I was good with you before I would made it into concrete, if that makes sense.
Yes, I made a, I made a phone call to ask if he could check with the Mount Washington and Big Sandy and said that I would also check with Big Sandy. He, he knows the Mount Washington cruise ship and to make sure that there wasn't a conflict for the times that he was planning on using and the times that the mount used. And said that that would be paramount to getting the, the permit was to make sure that there wasn't a conflict between vessels coming in and out of the dock.
And you'll only come in those three days?
So for, between August 13th and September 12th, those will be the three days we'd be, we'd prefer to do that. That's 15 trips total.
Right.
So 30 landings. And then from September 19th to October 12th, there'll be a, we were requesting a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and they're, they are 1830 to 2030 on, on a night, Friday night. So.
I'd like to get a copy of the schedule. I know you did.
Absolutely, I can give that. I just wanted to see if everyone was in agreeance before and then we obviously would get.
I'm a little troubled, actually, to tell you the truth, because it's, this is just being put in front of us and we have other restaurants and stuff that are down there and I'm thinking about the other restaurants and I don't, I don't even know what you're going to do, to tell you the truth. This, so what I'm looking at is I'm looking at a $2.40 per landing 30 times a year. And, and that's all I have in front of me. So I'm, I mean, honestly, Brian's negotiated this with you and, and I'm, and I'm sitting here thinking, well, Brian knows all the information, but we, we know nothing.
So I didn't, I didn't negotiate anything and he's coming forward to us for a permit that we've been arguing about and haven't figured out. So you can say no to him if you want, but then you're breaking your own rules. So that's your choice.
So if I could, I'm sorry.
I guess my feeling is part of what we asked for is a schedule. He's nice, he's telling us this.
Yep.
I would like a copy of it. I think that's, that's reasonable. I would have no problem giving him permission to dock for the Winnie Pusaki Day and then get the information that I think you're and I'm concerned about, just so we have a full understanding. There are different times of the year, different dates.
Of course.
And I, thank you for doing that, but I think we need more information.
All right.
Why don't we, why don't we just approve it for this coming week? And then you will supply us with a full.
Yes, sir.
Schedule as far as what you've basically told us.
Sure thing.
As soon as you can to Amy so that she can get it out.
Absolutely. And that's the reason why I don't have anything for you guys right now is because I wanted to make sure it was okay with everyone first and if there's any conflicting times or anything.
As long as it's not going to conflict with the mount, I think.
They're, they're fine with it.
I don't think we have a real issue at this point. Paul?
So I'm going to move to approve your permit to land for Winnipesaukee Day.
Okay.
Okay? And looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now could I speak to what you just heard? I mean, what you, what you heard was, we have some concerns that are unresolved as in this board and our, at least my personal feeling, just me. I think we've lost control of how people land and leave and come and go on our dock. We've lost control of it. That's my personal opinion.
Okay.
I, I always, I'm always wrong, but that's my opinion. And what you heard by a colleague is, so what's going to happen? I mean, are we going to have people serving food? Are we going to have, you know, our business community saying, hey, TV timeout? You know, now we have someone, you know, with a restaurant and it's just, all of that stuff's got to get kind of assorted.
Okay.
So this notion, and having a schedule is always good. I, I was going to, very frankly, I was going to get all, you know, lathered up because we've been breaking our rules throughout the year because of whatever reason, interests of others, and not requiring a schedule, which is not part of our ordinance. So the fact that you got one is probably a plus-up for you. But it would be great to kind of, we could stew on it, look at it. So we're going to, I think we want to approve your landing for Winnipesaukee Day. Have a nice time and then come on back and let's do this again.
Sure.
It's my, my opinion.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, one quick thing and, and please explain it's going to be a tour because I think you're going to land and you're going to go out and it's, it's a tour. So give us a good explanation because that makes a difference.
Sure. It's very similar to the, to what the Winnie Bill did.
Yes, that's right.
It's exactly the same. I actually load the same way and everything. So it's basic.
It just gives us that information. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, send that over to you guys to Amy and we can do this.
Get that to Amy as soon as you can.
Absolutely.
We have a motion on the floor?
We do.
We do.
For.
Yeah, I second it.
For this weekend?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And with the knowledge that you're going to supply us with more information?
I will.
Thank you.
What's on the, also, I think what they're looking for is what's on the boat, what's going to happen on the boat. Is there food? Is there liquor? Is there whatever?
I can, I can give you all of that. We'll give a full rundown for it.
Some of us know already, but.
Sure. Not a problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, next on our agenda, Moose Plate Grant Application Consent Form and Authorized Chair to Sign.
So Lenora is here on behalf of the Conservation Commission to speak on behalf of this. Basically, we need the Board of Selectmen to authorize the chair to sign this document. Lenora?
Hi, good evening. Lenora Clark, Conservation Commission, for real, my own business this time. This board might remember, I was before you, almost exactly a year ago, approving a transfer of title on an 87-acre piece of land up in North Wolfboro that provides excellent wildlife habitat. It's listed on the New Hampshire Fishing Game WAP map as some of the highest-ranked habitat in, both in the town and in the biological region. And you may recall, we had discussed that we were going to request Moose Mountains Regional Greenways to hold a conservation easement so the land would be protected in perpetuity. They are now seeking a couple of different grants to make that a reality. And because the land is owned officially by the town of Wolfboro, at least the Moose Plate Grant requires sign-off by the owner. And in this case, that would be represented by a chair senecal. So we are seeking your authorization to, seeking you to authorize the chair to sign a consent form that we're applying, that MMRG is applying for this grant.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the document.
I'll second that because I'm a Moose Plate owner.
So am I.
So am I. Okay.
There you go.
See, your money's going locally.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Lenora.
Thank you. No, does that consent form come back to me or does it just go directly from Amy to Moose Mountains? Do you know? Or should I get in touch with Amy tomorrow?
Get in touch with Amy.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
I'm signing it because.
We don't know.
I like that we have actual conservation land that is saved as complete green space.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Hazard Mitigation Update.
I'm the chief.
Hi, Tom Zotti, Fire Chief. As you know, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is a review of various hazards, both natural and man-made in town, and recommendations on how to address those. It's not a response plan. That's the difference between it and the Emergency Operations Plan. What you're looking at tonight is an update of the 2019 plan. The Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee began meeting almost exactly a year ago. We reviewed the plan, made some suggestions for change. They're relatively minor. It's far from what I would call a wholesale change. We added some new hazards that have emerged since the 2019 plan. For example, the large Taylor Community Memory Care Facility is one example. Those changes that the committee recommended were incorporated by our vendor, which in this case was Lake Region Planning Commission, then sent to New Hampshire Homeland Security and Emergency Management and FEMA for review. FEMA has placed it in what they call approvable pending adoption status, which as a practical matter means if you adopt it here tonight, we will forward that to them and it will be formally approved and published and away we go. Our intent would be, assuming that happens, we will then post the updated final version on the town website where it'll be available.[1749.20] on the town website, where it'll be available. It is a public document, and it was a public process to update it. I have forwarded the signature page to Amy, so if you choose to adopt it tonight, the page is in the office, waiting for you.
Hey, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I know that, I noticed that the high hazard potential dam section, we did not fill out, and I, we have the Crescent Lake Dam, we have the affluent storage pond, Pleasant Valley Road, and Russ Pond. Can you explain to the public why they aren't high hazard potential dams?
I'm not intimately familiar with the scoring process for how they're determined. My, my, and I can follow up on that, but my assumption is that it relates to the potential for loss of life and/or property in the event of a failure. And obviously, the larger, the more higher ranking it would take. That's not to say that it's not important, or it wouldn't result in loss of life or damage, but.
Inundation and life hazard downstream from the
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So you think that affluent disposal, you know, one wipes out? That's, that's a pretty big one. It has no wheres to go, where Crescent Lake will fill, you know, a little
Sure.
Less concerning, but still, it could wipe out the road. I just wanted to know why, and I'm assuming it didn't hit that, but we do have dams in this town that I know for the affluent disposal, we, they check them, but I think the public probably should have an understanding.
The, I had a long conversation with our representative who was working on this with us at Lake Region Planning today. I'm wondering if my conversation with him ties into what you're looking at, in that because it's a public document, and he mentioned dams as the specific example, they're somewhat vague in location and so forth, so it doesn't serve to create a target for somebody with perhaps nefarious purposes.
Okay.
I believe that may play a role in that. For example, some of the other types of hazards are complete with GPS coordinates and stuff. They don't do that for dams and those sort of things. Obviously, it's a public process, it's a public document, there's really nothing in there that's not available to the public with some degree of research.
The other thing I would mention regarding the reservoir is, it's a pretty fixed volume of water that's there. You don't have a supply that's coming through as a river or something that will continue to degrade downstream if there were to be a dam failure at that. It would be a surge problem, and then from that point, it would almost self-mitigate.
Maybe you could ask Steve Jeffers why?
Yep.
And maybe get back to us at some point, or at least get back to Linda?
Yeah, I
No, I'd like to know.
Fair question.
I just think the public should have, there's a reason why it wasn't, and I think we should know, because we do have a number of dams.
Can you check on that for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the F-1 disposal one would pique my interest.
Well, that's the one, because it would go
That's kind of a yucky situation.
But I think what Jim said is, is probably correct. Once it empties, it's empty.
That's very, very thoughtful.
What it wipes out in the process.
Right, that's a different story, but yeah.
I just think that, you know, I, I'm comfortable approving it, and just bring that information back, so that we can explain to the public why the dams aren't on there.
Right. And I would point out, too, that this process started a year ago. There are some minor things that we've since come across that have changed in the last 12 months. The language in the approvals from the state and from FEMA does allow us to make small editorial changes without another formal adoption.
All right, so, somebody wanna make a motion that we approve the update, but subject to Tom getting back to us with the information that we asked for?
So moved.
Okay?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
You'll get back to us for that?
Thanks, chief.
Great motion.
Okay, next on our agenda, letter of revolutionary marker placed by Winnipasaki D.A.R.
So this is an item that came in front of us back, I believe in January. We supported it as the town. This is actually on Brewster property, not on town property, but I do think it's important that the board supports the placement of this. Brewster has no issue with the placement of the memorial.
Okay. You wanna make a motion?
It is, do we have to move anything? It's not on our property.
I, no, but if you wanna move to support the placement of it.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful to get this across.
I'll make a motion to support the placement of the revolutionary marker.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, Town Manager's Evaluation Form. Linda?
Yes, I sent out to the board the evaluation form that we have used, and this is the time. We always, I always do this, we fill it out, and everybody says, well, I don't like. Well, what, now's the time to pick out what you don't like, or whether you don't like the form, or you'd like to do it in another way. Amy is able to convert this into a fillable format. So then, I would like, and I'll just kinda go through the process, and we can go back to the form. Jim does a self-evaluation and develops his 2026 goals to be reviewed by the Board of Selectmen. We're gonna need to set that date, the review process. Members of the Board of Selectmen are to send their evaluation form and their 2025 goal evaluation to me, and I'm just picking out dates, you can change them if you'd like. I was thinking September 3rd, along with any draft 2026 goals for Jim. I will put them all together and send the master document out by email to everybody by September 8th. I'm recommending that we do a meeting on September 10th, just to, just the Board of Selectmen and non-public to review Jim's evaluation form and draft 2026, Selectmen's goals for Jim. And then, again, I was thinking on September 24th, we'd hold another non-public meeting with Jim to review the board's evaluation and discuss Jim's self-evaluation. I said it that way, I said it on dates that we were not holding meeting because the length of our meetings and how late they are. That's just kind of the framework, and so, does anybody have any changes or another way they would like to see the evaluation done?
I have two very unpopular things I'd like to say. One would be, I wouldn't mind sitting in a workshop as the board for an hour, going through it and determining what we like as a group to change if we wanna change anything. If people don't want to, I'm fine with that also, but I do need till the next meeting to mull over any more changes in this form, because I just didn't have enough time to get to the entire form and look at everything and see if I wanted any changes.
I think, am I mistaken, Linda, that you set up these dates so we could do some of that?
I set up the dates. We can, if, if Brian wanted, we can decide on the full process on August 20th. I thought that, that I have no problem doing that. I just don't wanna go again, do this, go to the meeting and hear, oh, I don't like that. I don't want that.
Now, who would do that?
So, I have no problem. This is for us, the board, to decide if people want more time, if somebody has another evaluation form that they would have preferred to use, we can go that route, so. I can go, we can make a final decision on the, on the 20th. I just gave you an outline. This is for us to change and decide.
So is there a standard form that NHMA uses to evaluate their?
No.
No?
No, not that we're aware of. This is one that we've used for many years, and we have changed it off and on, but it seems to work.
Mr. Chairman.
So if you see something in there, John, that you don't like, let's bring it to the, we want August 20th?
I'm willing to do it.
And then we can, we can hash it out then.
Mr. Chairman.
That's my feeling. I don't wanna do it tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
That's not the purpose. Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien?
I wanna thank Ms. Murray, all the grubby stuff that we have to do.
Thanks, guys.
All the, so, these are not unpopular. By the way, I, I do agree that we probably do need to study the document, and I think that's right. When I returned as a, last year, I looked at this document, and my sense was, some of this stuff is just basically, what's in your job description? It's your job. And what we did last year, this past year, is our beloved town manager set goals and objectives, and it seems to me that you appraised performance against goals and objectives. And so, I, I'm keen to wanting to do that, but I'm also keen to, whatever the right time is, that we could get together to kinda mull through this, this document, and either clean it up, ditch it, or do something else. And I agree with Linda. I mean, having a, I don't like that after the fact is not appropriate. So I'm keen to wanting to mull it over, but I do wanna appraise on goals and objectives, and that'll be something that, as we get a little closer to this, I'm gonna wanna see the goals and objectives again, so that I can write an appraisal on that.
I, I have those. I have Jim's self and the board's, and I would
I know you do.
Well, I wanna, I'm gonna, if those are what you want
That's what I want.
I'm waiting for the board, and everybody wants it, everybody knows in the audience. I'll email it out to the full board and give you those documents before the next meeting, so you can see those. I'm comfortable, if everybody agrees, they are comfortable in me emailing the full board those documents.
Yep.
Okay.
I am. Guess the other, okay, so we've got dates of August 20th?
That's when we, we're gonna decide on the form.
And September 10th?
September 3rd is when you have to get them to me. No, yes, and I will get the, the master, everything collated and sent to you by the 8th, so we can meet on the 10th.
And then the 24th.
And then the 24th.
Okay. Everybody have that? Amy?
Why don't I just give you this? And I have one at home, that lays out what I have. I'm giving you, okay?
Yep.
There you go.
All right.
You're gonna email us that schedule?
Uh, uh.
The goals and objectives?
I'll do the, I'll do that schedule, too.
Schedule and goals and objectives.
We can change that schedule. Those are just
Those are suggested.
Suggestions.
Yep.
All right, next on our agenda is Employee Appreciation Day.
So we have a number of staff members who are working to coordinate Employee Appreciation Day, and I'd like to thank them for their hard work on that. Consists of Amy Capomucio, Michelle Chamberlain, Sherry Moore, Pat Waterman, Christine Collins. So I'd like to thank them for their dedicated work in trying to move this forward. They're still working on some final activities, but what we'd like to be able to do is close down the offices for September the 19th for Employee Appreciation Day. If for some reason employees do not participate in Employment, Employee Appreciation Day, what we have traditionally done is advise them that they need to utilize their time off. So they have to either A, participate in Employee Appreciation Day, which would, they would be compensated for, or they have to utilize a day off. So if we could approve closure for September the 19th, that would be a Friday afternoon, it'd be wonderful.
I'll move to approve closure on September 19th, 2025, for the annual Employee Appreciation Day events and celebration luncheon.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we need a motion to Gwendolyn Libby Trustee's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we did receive the contract from Timber Preservation Specialists out of Berwick, Maine. The total estimated cost to stabilize the north wall is $110,532.50. This contract was vetted by legal counsel. Legal counsel had one recommendation, that recommendation has been amended, that if there's any disputes, that they're to be held in New Hampshire courts, not in Maine courts. That has been resolved. So I'm requesting that you consider authorizing me the ability to sign said contract, and I think it's important as well that you determine a contingency. As you can see in the contract, there could be some overages that we run into, and if we run into those, we should have a contingency in place in the event. It would just save having to come back to another meeting.
Hey, do you have any questions?
So I, I do. I see the contract, I read the contract, and I'm willing to spend $110,532.26, but I'm not really into spending more than $110,532.26, because once we open up this can of worms, this is the slippery slope that we've started with. We're gonna stabilize the building, and if we find something that absolutely won't stabilize the building, then I'll consider it. But this is, this is really a tough decision, because the voters have told us, no, but we, we are committed to maintaining stabilization of the building, because that's what we said we were gonna do when we voted on that. But I'm not, not in favor of spending more than $110,532.26. That's just my opinion.
What we have right now is a situation where we're moving forward with the stabilization for the amount of money that's stated here. We have other issues, then we're gonna have to deal with them at that time. But I understand what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
I think the rest of us are very similar, as far as the way we think about it as well. Linda?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, the money we are spending is money that the voters approved in the Warren articles and do repairs, so we're using voter-approved money, and I just wanna get that cleared up. You know, I, I can go either way. We need to stabilize that back wall. If we find something else in there, we have to spend some more money. I don't have an issue with spending some more just on stabilizing that back wall, but I'm comfortable waiting and making them come back if that's the case, you know? Or I could put a contingency of, you know, $10,000 in here. I could go either way.
Now, you go first.
So I fall back to the same thing that I've said before. We have a fiduciary duty, based on us being the trustees of the museum, whether we like it or not, whether it's our favorite museum on the planet, or if we think, as some have said, that it should be bulldozed down and it's a piece of junk. We have a responsibility with the state of New Hampshire, with the Attorney General's Trust Division, and because voters voted in 1955 or 56 to take care of this museum, until we find a partner, or a person, or a group or organization to take it off our hands, we have a legal responsibility to make sure the building stays standing, and...
So what do you wanna do about spending the money?
I'm gonna spend the $110,000, and if they come back to us and say, we need $3,000 more to keep it from falling down, then I think we spend, we spend the extra $3,000. If they double the cost, of course, we're gonna see if we even have that much money available.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh.
You also? Mr. Chairman?
We're not gonna
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Paul.
No, you go ahead.
Well, we have so much money, we have a contract. We vote, most of us, I think, were there the day that they opened up the back wall, so I think that we all understand what they're gonna do to stabilize the building. So, Paul?
And, and I'm respectful to my, to my colleague, the fiduciary responsibility commentary is always appreciated. We have been, we should have reminded ourselves of that eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one years ago. I am with others that, we got an open-ended contract here, and I think, you know, it harkens back to what we, you know, what we talked about last, last year, which is first things first, stabilize the building, get the collection under control. Our friends at the Heritage Commission said, you don't need to remove it if you can, you know, kinda get the building. So I'm still okay with the, what we're doing there. I'm a little nervous about us firing all of our dry powder, and, because, you know, we are, we have 300 and some odd thousand, gotta be careful about how we use that, because this could go on for a bit. What about a situation, Jim, where, you know, they, they proposed progress payments? What about, you know, if they open up this thing, and they come to us with progress payment number one, and they go, we're still on path to 110? Oh, we're not. You know, in other words, kind of a milestone situation where they come to us as they're doing the work. If we could do something like that, and I'm just gonna work. If we could do something like that, and I'm just going to put a number out there for y'all to chew on, I'd say if we're heading towards a 25% overrun, we'd just stop. Just stop. That's a lot of money. That's a 25%. But could we configure something with them where they open the building, or they're doing their work, and they go, whoa, the whatever timber is, you know, it's in the wrong place, and that's going to be an extra, you know, just stop if we think it's a 25% uplift. That, go ahead. Go ahead.
You're probably not going to know that until they have at least three or four of those things opened up. So-
So, yeah.
There is a progress thing in there that says, after so many pillars or supports, if you will, we will know what's going on inside that wall for sure.
Yeah. So, to your point, page one and into page two, there's four, five progress payments. After each one of those, or just as we're going to get another remit from them, you know, we get a message that says, on plan, no uplift required. If we could agree that that's okay, and then not go above 25%, I'm comfortable with that. My only other issue, it's not an issue, but if I had this last night at the planning board, we were asking an applicant, when do you think you're going to start your project? And it was a vague, a morfus date. This says the workshop commits in the fall of 2025. That's a big, wide swath of when it's going to start. If we could get a little more clarity on when that's going to happen, that would be good for me. Those are my only two issues. Don't go above 25%. Get some defined stuff at progress payment time, and get a little more clarity on the date start.
Paul, I think, at least like myself, I know I'm going to be up there off and on during the project. Because I want to see what's going on in those walls, because I have some familiarity with the building, having worked on it in the past. But I think that it's going to be pretty easy, Paul, for us to follow this from the standpoint of the town itself, personally.
So are you okay? Would we be okay with saying we're not going over 25%?
Well, I don't have any issue with that.
But there's-
But I think that the progress payments are going to also give us a timetable as to what's going on in the future. That's what I think.
Dave, so they're allocated $120 an hour, that's 820 hours, which was 20 40-hour work weeks. So if we do 200 hours, it's $24,000. So you've got four guys, five guys working 40 hours. That's a week. So is that what we're going to do? The progress? We're going to check on it every week and-
Well, the progress payments due at certain times, you know, during the project, if you read this, right? After so many, after so many, if you will, sections is done, two sections, then they're going to ask for another progress payment. So by that time, we should be able to know what's going on. In my mind, we should. If we don't, then we're in trouble all the way around.
So I'm equating those hours to those sections?
Right, I know what you're doing. I know what you're doing.
All right.
I see that. But I think that by the time they're there, two weeks, we're going to have a pretty good idea what's going on. That's my feeling. So I don't have any problems with the payment schedule, but I agree with Paul that certainly, though after a couple of weeks, or at least after two payments, we should have a pretty good idea what's going on.
My understanding is that there's a set performance here, and if I read on page two, change order and additional work, and I go down, if the parties cannot reasonably agree on the contract change order, the agreement may be terminated by either party on Article 5. So, you know, as we go through here, it seems like we should sign this contract.
Agreed.
There is a way out. If it gets to be too high, we lay out. I'm concerned about going back and renegotiating the contract.
Me, too.
And that's what I hear going on. And I think that gets us, so I think we've got an out. I think that's what you're looking at.
Linda, if I led you to the opinion or impression that I want a renegotiation, I'm sorry for doing that, because it's not. That was not what I intended to do. I just want to put a leash on this.
But how you get a leash, you were saying?
And, you know, kind of make sure that we know quickly if we are going above cost. I just want to have a clear leash on that one. And maybe, Brian, I think you might not, or you indicated you may not agree. And if that, if we do that, I'm kind of saying a threshold is 25%, and then we have to just stop, drop, and roll on what we're going to do here. That's all.
Okay, so I've built a house before, a couple of times.
Good for you.
And no need to be snarky, Paul. And we had a structural issue with a bad crew when we were building a house. So I could have just said, I'm going to be more than 12%, 15%, 22%, 25% over budget. I'm just going to punt and let it fall down. We could rip up the back wall and see that, hmm, we're going to have an issue here, it's worse than we thought, whatnot, and then we could just say, eh, forget it, and let it fall down. Then we're going to be in big trouble with the Attorney General's office. So if it comes out to 25.3%, then we go to court with the Attorney General-
No.
-upset with us because we went over 25. I don't know how we put an arbitrary number on it.
Okay.
I think that we go, like Dave said, and like Linda said, we watch the project closely, we see where the, what's happening, and I don't know if there's going to be two, three, five, eight, 12 people working on this job at any one time. They could end up with a larger crew, a smaller crew. I don't know how we nail down how many hours they're going to take to fix a building that hasn't even been examined yet. I guess we have Houdinis and fortune tellers.
Don't need to be snarky now.
Yeah, I'm comfortable signing it, but I do agree that it would be nice if we could get them, give us an estimated start date.
Yep.
I think that's not unreasonable.
I don't think that should be unusual.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we sign the structural stabilization of the north wall Libby Museum with Preservation Timber Framing Inc. of Berwick, Maine.
Second.
Oh, do you need to amend that with a specific date for?
No, I think, I think we can just ask for that date.
We can ask them for it. I think Jim can.
I think it's reasonable for us to know when, but I don't think-
Second.
Hey, alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any old business?
Move to come out of the Libby trustees.
What's that?
I'll second that. We're coming out of the trustees' meeting. Yes, I have some old, I heard you say old business.
Well, I thought it was under the trustees' meeting.
No.
But that's okay. Yep.
I've got a couple of old business. When I was going through some of our minutes on our July 16th, that we had tabled Mr. Duchesne's motion regarding what a captain or a boat, a vessel needed in terms of the captain and stuff, we don't, I didn't see that on the agenda. I think that's something that we should go back to for the August 20th. We also were to have a public hearing on parking spaces, and I think that should also be on the August 20th. And the sidewalk ordinance should have been, I think, on this one, to hold a public hearing, because it's ready to go. So I would like to get those things going on August 20th.
And I'll second that.
The sidewalk is noticed for the 20th. That was how it fell related to timing and noticing. So that is scheduled for the 20th. And yes, we do have other follow-up items that we need to circle back to.
Can we get the public hearing on parking spaces? That was also requested, and I recall, because it-
Mr. Chairman, I think, did Amy speak with you about a date for that? Did we coordinate one?
Okay. I mean, we can do the 20th. I think it's going to be a very heavy schedule, but we can do it on the 20th if you'd like.
I think we ought to move it till later on in the season, to tell you the truth. I think we've tabled it, and the spots are where the spots are. Nothing's really going to change right now.
I don't know whether it's this minute or the last minute, and I brought it up, we hadn't done that, and asked, and Dave Senical agreed that we should have a public hearing, and I thought we were going forward with a public hearing soon.
But I think that Mr. Thurston isn't disagreeing that we need a public hearing, he's just agreeing with when it should take place.
Well, I just talked to, and Dave, I, my was on the assumption, nobody said that, my understanding it was to happen sooner than later.
Yeah, I would rather not leave something hanging in limbo, and as we say, I don't want to kick the can down the road. Let's just make it, let the public speak and make a decision.
Thank you.
When do you want to do it, Mr. Chairman?
What's that?
You want, are you going to call a date for that? The 20th?
A what?
A date.
What date do you want to have that public?
Well, I think Jim is going to see if we can do it on the 20th.
Okay. I'll just say, it's going to be a very heavy agenda, just so you're aware.
Mm-hmm.
So are we giving the, are we giving the public a good opportunity here to know that they're going to debate safety and the crosswalks?
Second time, second time we've talked about it, and it would be a public notice.
Okay, is there any other old business?
But I'd just like to ask that we just ask one question, just one question, when we have this discussion. Why do we need to roll it back? What is, that's all I want to know. That's all I want to know. And that's how I'll vote, is based upon how I hear that.
I, only thing I wanted was to give the public a chance to give us a public input. It was another one of those motions that we made when it was not on the agenda. It was a reaction to public input. There was no chance to have good public input, and I just would like to go back and allow the public the opportunity to do that.
It should have been, that motion should have been tabled that night, and we should have left it up for the public for a later date to decide how-
Well, that's what we're going to do.
Yep.
We're going to do.
Okey-dokey.
Is there any other old business?
I think Linda covered it. There were a couple of unbuttoned ones, particularly Brian's issue about, that he was, he asked to table, and we have to put that back on the agenda, so. And the sidewalks issue as well.
Hey, is there any other business?
I've got other business. So I'd like to talk to the people about a letter that I got from Pat Waterman about the employees in the parking spots in the town hall parking lot. The concern is that we value our workers at our town hall, and they have to take a break to go to lunch, and we have other businesses around the community that are vying for the same parking spots. And when they go away, and then they want to come back, there's no spots there. So I would like Jim to find a process where we can designate certain areas of the parking lot for employee parking, and also more business parking for people that use the town hall, for the planning department and such.
How do you do that?
All right, moving along. How managers report?
Couple of items. Mr. Bill Scott, the new planner, started on Monday. He's already attended two night meetings, and he's very much so got his hands full in the planning department. I'm going to try to get him in here on the 20th as an introduction, and what he's observing to this point in the planning department. Today, we also, or, excuse me, Monday, the deputy chief of EMS started. His name is Brian Evangelista. He's relocated to the area from Massachusetts. He's a longtime paramedic, has a significant EMS background, and is going to be a good fit for this. We are meeting on a weekly basis, the chiefs and myself, regarding the ambulance process. We're hopeful to have them in front of you on the 20th to give a status update and an introduction as well. You might recall that there's a project scheduled for this fall on South Main Street, beyond Weston's Auto, but before Oakwood Road, the replacement of that South Main culvert, which failed a couple of years ago. At this point, that has been put on hold until the spring of 2026. So that project will not be taking place this fall. It will be the spring of 2026. Lastly, CIP, we are launching CIP. We have kickoff meeting on Friday. So it's, there's a lot for the committee to weigh in on. So it'll be a very interesting CIP season, and that's what I have for you this evening.
Okay, committee reports. Brian?
So, um-
Oh, Brian, yeah, go ahead.
We had a bu-
Brian?
Yeah, we had a budget committee meeting. We had an energy committee meeting today that was a great meeting about looking at having a larger solar array with a large battery backup that would actually help reduce the cost of energy in the town of Wolfboro, because we know that in the next contract, we're probably going up, I'm going to guess, three to four cents is what our electrical rate increases, it could potentially be. And so any way we can help mitigate that is a great thing. I've worked a lot with Lucy Van Cleve, the head of the EDC, on the Lake Winnipesaukee day. We've, we were on, just had three interviews on radio stations, and we've managed to get our fundraising to the end, and I think we're going to be okay. I want to thank the community as a whole for pitching in, and for all our donors and sponsors. We'll be setting up, closing the dock at 3 o'clock, closing the boat ramp for the day, and having a beautiful night with perfect weather. I want everybody to come down and enjoy.
Paul?
That sounds like a blast, and I'm glad you made major funds. Congratulations. I went out with our colleagues, and we walked our downtown sidewalks the other day. They're not pretty. That's what I'll say about that. It's not pretty. We swore in a new police officer a week and a half ago, young lady, McKenzie. It was great to be there for the swearing in. We said goodbye to Casey. I spent last evening at the planning board with our new town planner, Mr. Scott. And, you know, it's always, you shouldn't give the accolades too early in the program, but I'm going to give him accolades early in the program. He didn't say much, but when he did, people stopped and listened intently. And he actually made a substantial contribution to what I think was a little bit of fuzz in the air. I was very, very good. And Bill also attended a site review that we had over on Trotting Track. Like Brian, I attended the budget committee, and I attended, again, planning board. One thing I, and maybe Linda, you and I can chat about, or we can chat about this earlier. We went through a pretty fair conversation, and then the planning board then decided to kind of put it down for a minute, on shorefront residential regulations, if that's the right words. And the reference was made that, and so I may have this wrong. So this isn't meant to be anything other than, it's that the Waters Committee had recommended some changes to those regulations, and that may be before I got back on the board. And so I didn't want to raise my hand and say, what are you talking about? But is there any document that came over from Waters to the planning board saying, we want you to change the following things?
Yes. We, the Wolfboro Waters had a subcommittee who looked at that, that regulation, that zoning ordinance, recommended some changes, and went to the planning board and discussed why they wanted those changes. Then the planning board took it.
Just for my selfish benefit, since I sit on the board, can I see a copy of that?
I'll have to go back and-
Dig it up. It's in that pile you have.
Yeah, it's in one of those files back there. I will check my computer, but it did go through that process, and-
Or maybe it's in our minutes. Is it in our minutes, Jim, or Dave?
I can probably go back. Let me hunt through it, maybe in Wolfboro Waters' minutes on reference to it.
You can probably find it quick in the weekend.
Yeah, maybe.
All right. That was, that was all. But well done last night by the- All right. That was, that was all. But well done last night by the, by the town planner. Thank you.
Linda?
Yeah. I attended the Wolfboro Chamber of Social that took place at the Clark House Complex barn. It was put on by the Historical Society to celebrate their 100th anniversary. They're really pushing that. It was well-attended. I attended the Wolfboro Historical Society monthly meeting. The group is hoping to receive the Turner Cost Estimate Report on the repairs to the schoolhouse. They would like to get that project moving forward. I attended the library solar open house, which was well-attended to celebrate the completion of the solar project with Paul and Brian was there also. I attended a Friends of Pop Whalen meeting. They are putting on a golf tournament. I attended several community TV meetings that were addressing their fundraising campaign, which is moving along. This past weekend at the Sandtrap at the golf course, there was a fundraiser, donated a percentage of breakfast and lunch specials to community TV. And I want to thank the Sandtrap for being willing to do a fundraiser. Brian and I met with the Heritage Commission subgroup on the Libby Museum. We've got our responses, and we're waiting to hear from the other group. I attended the retirement party for Casey, and Casey had been our finance director and also our assistant town manager. And I walked with the rest of the board down South Main Street, and we were reviewing the completion of the South Main Street project, making comments, looking at curbing and sidewalks. And that's all I have.
Dave, if I could, as Linda mentioned, the group that you two have met with, the Heritage, yeah. So we made an outreach to the Friends of the Libby. The Friends of the Libby Museum are having board-level discussions amongst themselves. They, you know, in my conversation with Tom Goodwin, the answer was, "We will get back to you. We have nothing to share with you at the time." So that's, that was kind of what I heard from Tom.
Okay. So we're ready whenever you get something from them.
Yep, 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 yep.
Who's the chair of the Friends of the Libby right now?
Tom Goodwin.
All right. I went to Casey's get-together and have been in a lot of different places over the last couple of weeks. But that's all I have.
So I met with Jim, Steve, and Allison, discussed the library concerns of drainage in the back parking lot and the trees adjacent to the library property where the neighbors have concerns with the squirrels that are jumping off the trees onto their house and carrying the nuts in their house, and if we should be cutting the trees down or if that should be their responsibility. I also met with Steve to discuss the culvert on the culvert crossing and the easement and the engineer's design on 208 Forest Road and to look at other options of how we could get that up towards the street and what civil engineering would be required. I also met with Dave and the owners of 208 Forest Road the following day to listen to their concerns on how the town is discussing the easement across their property with potential buyers. I had a community center meeting with Amy and Dave and the rest of the group. Some were remote, and that was with Ty and Bond to discuss the future plans of the community center, multi-generational center. We're discussing two plans. Plan A to reuse the MED building and to build a new addition overlooking Back Bay. And Plan B is to cull the MED building and build all new. And I did the walk downtown with the rest of the crew and the sidewalks. There's a serious concern for anybody that's down there in front of bootleggers. There's a sidewalk that's shifted down there. It's got about a two-inch lip. One of the owners of the store came out and said that they've picked up multiple people off the pavement because they've been falling on that spot. There's also other, there's two other spots where crosswalks have giant potholes and there's, and then I took pictures of probably four other locations where the sidewalk is totally deteriorated and causes a serious liability for the town. I also attended the planning board meeting last night, and I agree with Paul. Bill Scott, he waited patiently and listened to the rest of the crowd say what they need to say and came in at just the right moment to give critical talking points.
Okay. Any questions from the press?
I don't have a question, but I do have praise for the town for the completion of the solar project at the library. There was a lot of planning and collaboration that brought that to fruition. It also was a great public-private partnership. We can be proud of that because we're not only powering operations but also heating and cooling. And Sam Evans-Brown from Clean Energy New Hampshire, who spoke to the group, pointed out that Wolfboro was in a unique position, having its own municipal electric department, to be able to manage its rates and load shift and things like that to help reduce costs because demand for electricity is going to be going up. And, but we are in a position to deal with that. So I was proud of our town for doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Next, any public input? Did you people have some information or whatever? I didn't mean to cut it off early.
Dave Bolduc, Chair of the Heritage Commission and on the Libby Subcommittee. I facilitated in the contract that was, that Jim presented to you from New Hampshire Timber Preservation. And I pressed him on the issue of the start date. And his reply to me was that he was really squeezing us in. And to say he could start in fall was about as big a commitment as he could make at that time. So I would just kind of warn you about maybe not trying to play hardball with a company that has a history with the Libby Museum, is an established, reputable company who will honor their word as it's written in the contract. Because anybody who knows contract, construction, I mean, we started this project in early June with nothing, with no plan at all. And within a matter of a couple of months, we were able to give you a contract that was, you know, is now going to be in effect within five months of starting. I'm just, I mean, you're welcome to see if you can get a more accurate start date from him, but I just wanted to relay to you that he's doing the best he can to feed us in the fall. And he's doing that because he's committed to the museum.
Excuse me. Can he, can he kind of give us like a heads up whether or not he's a couple of weeks away or that way we can...
This is public input. We're not supposed to be asking questions. Jim should surely reach out to him and see if he can get more clarity. I mean, my conversations with him happened before Jim got the contract, so maybe he has a better handle on, on what his time commitments are. But he explained to me that he had a full slate of projects before this, before we got approval on this one. So he's literally trying to feed us, feed us in.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. I need a motion to go in and on public, please.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye. Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.